All right, we've got six o'clock. At six o'clock, I call this meeting in Saginaw City Council order. Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Item number two is invocation. For that, we have Michelle Stewart from the Crosswords Church. Welcome.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Let us pray. God of all creation, we thank you for this day and the many blessings we have received. We thank you for every life we've been able to impact in a positive way. We thank you for entrusting us with the responsibility of serving our community. We thank you for the ability to use our minds to discern your will and work to create a strong and healthy community. We thank you for our community and all who serve it, for those who teach and those who protect, those who repair, work in parks, those who work on roads, those who plan and those who make the plans happen. We thank you for those who heal and those who counsel. We thank you for those who govern and those who elect. We pray for the hungry, unemployed, uninsured, the mentally and physically ill, and those who fall in the minority of our needs. As the meeting begins this evening, I pray for each person here. Give each person clarity of mind, creativity, compassion, due diligence, integrity, and a sense of urgency for what our community needs. I pray for each councilperson and elected official. I pray that their households will be blessed. I pray for their peace and balance as they manage the many tasks in front of them. I pray that their lives will be fruitful beyond what they can even imagine, leaving a legacy for both their family and the community in which they serve. I pray that their words and actions will bring healing, restoration, security, trust, and comfort to those they serve. I pray for extended joy and patience in the long hours they are sometimes necessary to get the job done. I pray that tonight they will have listening ears, thoughtful words, a presence of mind, and an open heart. In Jesus's name, let us say amen.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well done. Item three is audience participation. That is covered on the screen. Please silence your cellphones, devices, et cetera, so we can have a nice meeting. Also, if you wish to speak on any posted item, fill out a form with the city secretary and come up when that item is called. I'd like to welcome our folks watching online. I hope we have a good audience watching online and hope you can see and hear well. Give us some feedback to how the audio and visual feed are, please. So, welcome. Item four is the consent agenda. I've had a request to pull item H. So, we will pull item H. So, we will be voting on A, action regarding minutes December 3rd, B, action regarding approval of funds to keep Saginaw Beautiful Committee project, C, action regarding purchase of Badger Orion Cellular System water meters, D, action regarding acceptance of general warranty deed for Mirstone Properties, E, action regarding city council consent for permit for a small cell node at Blue Ridge Trail, F, action regarding rejection of bids for police parking lot expansion, G, action regarding hazard mitigation action plan, resolution adoption, and I, action regarding a supplemental agreement with Union Pacific Road for the Fairmont Sanitary Sewer Crossing.
Mr. Mayor, can we pull E also for just a brief discussion?
E as well. So, we will pull E and H. So, we're voting on A, B, C, D, F, G, and I.
I so move.
Second?
I'll second.
Valerie's second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed or unopposed? The record effect. We do have a quorum, a full house this evening. So, let's go in order. Let's do E first.
This question is for, really, for Bren. Bren, I know we're, this has kind of been imposed upon us that we have to accept these small cell nodes. The state's been so kind as to say cities really don't have much to fight back about.
Correct.
But some concern that I have is utility contractors, as they come into our neighborhoods, a lot of times they have a hard time cleaning up their mess and forgetting what things looked like when they got there.
Sure.
Can we make certain that there are some teeth in our agreements with these folks that allow us to claw back in some form or fashion the ability to either recover costs that we incur as a city to clean up their mess, or that we can do something to maybe exact some financing from them to clean up the mess?
Certainly. I mean, there are a couple of approaches we can take. Because of the preemption in Senate Bill 1004, which was adopted two sessions ago, there really is no agreement that governs this. Instead, we're entitled to adopt a right-of-way management ordinance and a design criteria management ordinance, but damage to public property, you know, regulations that affect damage to public property can be universally applicable, and certainly, we can take a look at the right-of-way management ordinance, in particular with respect to small cell node installation, and confirm that there is recourse for any damage done to public property.
So, that applies to public property, but we know that some of these installations will be very near private property. I think the one that's being proposed today may very well be in someone's front yard in terms of access to the site. So, I mean, damaging sprinkler systems, front yards, that sort of thing that may be outside of public right-of-way?
I mean, typically, damage to private property by private entities isn't something that we regulate through an ordinance. This particular process deals with right-of-way installation. Obviously, if a private small cell node provider, telephone cell service provider were to damage private property, there would be a, that would give rise to a separate private cause of action that the property owner could bring. We can certainly look at a process to address issuing a citation, but there really is no recourse that the city would have to issue a civil penalty or anything like that, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to perform improvements or repairs on private property using public funds if we didn't damage the property in the first place. So, it, if they damage private property, it really is primarily the, the private property owner's recourse to pursue, but we can certainly look at a municipal court citation process for that sort of damage.
My concern is, is that there seems to be a situation where, where the utility company has the right to come on to public property to perform work.
Right.
But that work is in such close proximity to private property that the likelihood of potential damage to private property exists, and the private property owner has no recourse whatsoever, ever, under protections of the city.
Sure.
They have to take it on themselves.
Right.
And if they have to go hire a lawyer to fight the utility company, we know who's going to win in that process argument. The utility company's got lawyers on staff, or they've got somebody that they always use, and the poor homeowner.
Right.
Is left holding the bag and having to clean up, clean up the mess.
Limited reports.
Over something we're having to do anyway. So, my concern is, is how do we protect that homeowner in the event that that happens? Is there something that we can do to protect the homeowner?
We can look at, as I say, we can look at the right-of-way management ordinance to determine whether there is a performance bond requirement that, that we could impose that would cover damage to third-party property, something like that where there would be recourse for the city to intervene and assist with the cost associated with the damage caused. But other than that, there really is no civil penalty process for us to be able to assess or invoice one of these carriers, because we're not commissioning this project. They're not our contractor. We're just permitting it, just like we permit any other work in the right-of-way, and, you know, if Verizon wants to put their line in the right-of-way and we issue them a permit, they could equally damage, you know, private property in the course and scope of their work as well. So, I, I think that perhaps a bond requirement might be advisable. Let me look at that issue and what, what the limitations might be under that Senate bill with respect to our ability to impose that, because there are some severe limitations on how much we can charge, how quickly we have to issue these permits and approve them, and so I want to, I want to make sure that we're not preempted from adopting a process that would obviously assist a private property owner where there to be damage.
So, you, you would envision a bond being in place that, that the property owner may be able to take advantage of, whether they're an obligee or not?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So, that, that's, again, that's just off the top of my head at the moment. Let me look to see whether there is some avenue that we could pursue and come up with some solution to propose to the council, because as I say, this is, this is no different, unfortunately, this process is no different than a building permit process. The only reason you all are seeing this in the first place is because there are some limited exceptions that allow discretion to be involved where the installation occurs on residential rights of ways of 50 feet or, or less.
Okay. Thank you, Bren. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on 4E? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve 4E as presented.
Thank you, Patrick.
I'll second.
Valerie's second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed. Item number 4H.
Since you've already pulled 4H, can I request that we go into council with Bren for just a minute?
You mean into consultation with attorney?
Yes, please.
On 4H?
Yes.
Okay. Then pursuant to, hold on. Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney over item 4H. We will adjourn and be back shortly.
Eighty-seven percent, fifty-five percent. No, the high was, uh...
The 566.
I thought we had the whole 750, the $12 million.
Oh, no, we just had the 566.
Okay. So, went down, then on the lower, the medium, and the 4 million on the proposal?
What was five? We had the 566 on 412.
Which was primarily just the high.
Yeah, that's what that 566 was. And I think with high, medium, whatever, it was the... They've accepted a warranty.
Yes. We have no more H. Hold on. That was a perfect reply.
Yeah.
It didn't go the length of its...
Most of the time I actually heard a phrase.
I had it.
Our surveyors. Piece of property is...
Hey Buttercup, you have thought of goofing off this morning?
Wasn't too bad. Did Randy tell you about talking to AG?
Yeah. He wants to do permanent. That's good.
It is, but kind of gave you business about, took you for your word and what would happen, and it, I think that, I think that stuck you pretty good when I put it in that respect. So, we'll meet if he's agreeable to come to a meeting.
He threw it on the chemie horn. I heard that.
Yeah.
Somebody chemie horn was working on AG still.
We, we met with him. Sent him, sent him to quit proposal to help him out.
What all did that include?
That was just a couple of meetings and stuff. We followed up with him multiple times, he just never got back.
He's just, he's just difficult.
He doesn't want to do it. We had met with him, sent him the proposal, and kept following up with him, and he never got back to us.
I wish they would sell all the property.
It's not making that money to afford you guys.
What's that?
It just doesn't make enough money to afford you things.
I think he meant too many.
Yeah.
We are back at 6:17. We're back into regular session. We will discuss item 4H, action regarding economic development director agreement. For that, city manager, Gabe Raym.
Mayor and council, happy new year. Be happy to answer any questions about the, the contract before you, so I'll draw your attention to, in your packet, it was Exhibit A, outlines 23 action items that, instead of being a city employee, Alora, serving as a consultant, would take care of all these things. You know, if there's any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. Really, really, it's been fun having Alora as the first economic development director in the city. We've done really great work. I hope that the momentum can continue. You know, very positive retail survey, our first mixed-use development in the square. These are all projects that'll continue, and we'll see to fruition and construction soon. So, with that, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Sorry about that. Obviously, there was an awful lot of work that went into this presentation, and I appreciate the effort of Alora's on doing that. What I see here is kind of a to-do list rather than actual results that we're looking for. You know, I'm looking for a return on the investment. I want to see some businesses come in. I want to see them thriving here in Saginaw, and I just don't see a lot of that outlined here in, in this same, in this report, and it's similar to what we heard prior, that, well, we have to wait for things to happen, and, you know, I think the citizens really want to see some return on their investment here, and I just don't see a lot of that.
I do.
A lot of the items that are listed on here, like monthly newsletter, blogs and things, were things that were started and then stopped, understanding that she was extremely busy. You know, and I know from experience that owning your own business, things are a lot busier, and so I'm hoping that we will, we will be seeing these monthly items as promised on this list.
Yeah. No comments. That's why it's in the contract document.
Okay. In the work plan, you know, that, in the bottom part of Exhibit A with the little bitty tiny, tiny, tiny print, again, this just seems like a, a to-do list based on the action items above. Again, I don't see a whole lot of productivity coming out of this that benefits the city, and that's a concern for me. I really do want to see businesses come in, into this town, and I have a problem with that. I can assume that since you're starting your own business, you'll be dealing with other cities. Maybe not initially, but you will be dealing with other cities. So, I have a problem with, on the action items, time and cost with the city of Saginaw sponsoring, paying for her events that she goes to if she's going to be working with other cities. I don't think it's fair to our citizens for us to have to pay for those particular items.
That's a fair point.
And that's my personal opinion.
Sure, sure.
But, you know, the council decides that.
I'll draw your attention. If you remember, before we hired a full-time person, we had Jack Thompson on retainer with Rossi, so he represented the city for a couple of months in economic development-type discussions and events. The arrangement's similarly structured. You know, Alora will represent the city of Saginaw on our behalf, no different than Andrew Simonson. Really, the only knock I have on Andrew Simonson is he's a UT guy. He serves as our city engineer by contract. It is no different arrangement-wise. We have a punch list of action items that we're expecting are completed by the end of this year, and we can regroup at the end of the year and figure out what we want to tackle next. So, I think it's a solid contract. I think it offered value, and that's why it's before you.
Well, again, my concern is I just don't see a lot of ROI for the money that we're spending in this department, and we, I don't, I haven't seen a whole lot of ROI.
Right.
Since this part, department was created.
Oh, sorry.
My personal opinion.
Gabe, what will be the, the savings to the city from this action?
So, pretty significant. Instead of having an Alora, she would, pending council's action, she would no longer be a city employee, so this contract represents less than half of her salary, her current salary, and we would not pay health insurance, retirement benefits. So, you know, we're getting twice in savings as, as opposed, so it's, it's a good financial deal if that's the only lens you want to look at it.
But that's half based on nine months, not 12 months, right?
That's correct. Yeah.
So, it's not exactly half.
Right. So, $5,000 a month. Right. Which is still less than her costs as a personnel costs, retirement, salary benefits, that sort of thing.
I like the action and item list. I like the specifics and deliverables. I, I think there are some, some meat in here for what this contract will provide to the city. I think it's good things, as you mentioned, building on some of the momentum we already have, then taking some steps forward as well. So, I, I liken it as a cost savings to the city. I think it's a good, good deal all the way around for all involved, and there are some, some things here that the, the contract will, the client will receive. That's a whole list of things that the city will receive from the, the consultant, so I think it's a very good deal for the city, save the city some money and still get us some good economic development, which we sorely need.
But is this, oh, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Is this contract for all of your clients, or is this just for the city of Saginaw? Are they all going to have a similar contract to like this one?
Every client has their own specific contract. There is no universal contract, just like economic development for each city is different. It requires different things depending on the goals and objectives of each council, so too with the contract, and it would change yearly as well. That's sort of the idea of pairing it with the fiscal year, is as markets change, as needs arise, then to have that sort of tailored scope is really what matters, I think.
Counsel, other questions? Yes, Mary.
I think it's a great concept, saving the city money. We need Alora's expertise and continuity to finish the projects that we already have, and I was pleased when I was reading what would be required of Alora. I was like, because I was worried, like, oh dear, is she not going to do this? Is she not going to do this? Well, all of my questions were answered. Oh, and then I thought, well, is she still going to be getting our name out there and, and, you know, letting us be known to other, you know, to developers, et cetera? Yes, she is. Is she still going to be doing these meetings that she's been having? Yes, she is. So, she's going to be doing everything that she was doing as a full-time employee to considerable cost savings. So, I mean, it's, it's a win-win. I don't see any downside to it at all for the city.
Thank you, Mary. Any other questions, counsel?
Just have a couple of comments. I think, I think we should celebrate a couple of things here. From a community development perspective and from an economic development perspective, the major changes that have occurred in our community in the last 24 months is more of a sense of place, and ranging from parades to Christmas lights to fireworks shows, to murals, to paintings on the sides of grain elevators, we are slowly but surely creating a sense of place for our community and holding on to that sense of place. And to speak to some of the things that Alora has done that have been beneficial for economic development in that vein is creating somewhat of a sense of place in our economic community. There are metrics that I personally have asked for and have not seen, and I know it takes a lot of work to pull that stuff together, and I know there are things in motion today to make those things happen. Some of that includes the cellphone technology that we spoke about about a month ago, maybe two months ago, where we're tracking the habits of people. Hate to say it, but if you're using a cellphone, we know where you're shopping.
Big Brother.
Yep. So, we're tracking that, and we're getting that information. We know who's buying what and where. It's important for us to know. But I, I think that the genuine intent of council a year ago, even 18 months ago, was to have a full-time position, a person that worked for the city of Saginaw that was infused their blood was a part of our community. And although I appreciate the contractual arrangement, I, I don't know that that's a long-term sustainable thing, but I certainly see an advantage of having a contractual relationship with Alora in a transition period, and I don't have a problem with the way that the agreement is drafted as it is now. I would expect, Gabe, some of those metrics that I had asked for, since they're really not, they're not called out as deliverables in this contract, I would look to you to pull those metrics together and present those to us, which I think you would very easily be able to do with the help of Alora over a certain period of time, and we could certainly determine what that period of time is. But I, I want to, Alora, thanks for what you've done to create the Shop Saginaw, to, to create some of these things that did not already exist to help us in our efforts to create the sense of place. That's very much appreciated, and I, I certainly see the advantage, I want to restate this, of continuing forward in a contractual relationship with Alora on an interim basis.
Can we do it on a monthly basis, like we did the other ones?
I'd recommend the contract as proposed.
That's not what I, I just asked, can we do it on a monthly basis with that?
I, I think every, each party has a termination, 30 days notification, so in effect, it really is kind of monthly. One thing, just globally, so economic development as a topic is really exciting and fun and new. It's fun to think about new things and see dirt moving. The reality is, if, you know, we got our citizen survey wildly successful, everybody wants a Chili's. Well, if it was as easy to get a Chili's, right, I call up, hey Chili's, give me my baby back ribs. Would you like to build one in Saginaw? I'm telling you, you wouldn't need me, or you wouldn't need staff to do that. So, I think some of this... So I think some of this, there's maybe some, there's a lot of anticipation, but it takes time. You know, we're planting seeds. Patrick kind of touched on it, on some marketing, getting to know brokers, working with the business community. We've got a lot of mixed-use developments that are kind of cooking now, and they don't mean a thing at all to anybody until dirt moves, right? So nobody, except us, and the thousands that are watching me on TV as I speak, they don't mean much until we see them in person. And we're very close, especially with the square, which is a big deal for the city. First mixed-use development, couldn't have done it without Alora. She represents the city well, and we're going to keep moving forward.
Excellent. Thank you, Gabe. I will, let's move forward on this. I want to entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the contract as presented.
Thank you, Patrick. Do I have a second?
A second.
Charlie, a second. All those in favor raise your hand. All those opposed? Thank you. All right, that is item, that is finally through the consent agenda. Item five, It's Time Texas Community Challenge. And that is City Secretary Janice England.
Mayor and counsel, you'll recall that this time last year, we took a stand and signed a proclamation that we were going to join the It's Time, it's a program, or it's, I'm sorry. It's a program put on and sponsored by HEB Grocery out of San Antonio. It's to promote well-being of citizens and encourage physical activity and that sort of thing. This is the new one. It starts in January of each year, and this one goes from January and ends on March the 1st. People can go online and sign up and participate. You get points for different activities that you do, for logging in, and they actually give prizes at the end, after the end of the contest is over with. So it's kind of a neat way to encourage our citizens to be involved and get out and get healthy, and makes a way for the community to get out and walk, do different things. It doesn't have to be anything special or organized, just some way to promote fitness in our community. So last year, they did have us take a picture, and y'all signed a challenge and a pledge. Since we're already a part of the program, that's not necessary this year. It's just on the agenda tonight to let people know that we are going to participate again, and they can go online and join that, and the city is already set up in there.
Well, thank you, Janice. Yeah, and I know we did it last year, and I would encourage everyone to sign up and do it this year again, January 6th to 1st. I will take part. We'll take a picture at some point, get some of these things going. It's Time Texas Community Challenge, so I'm all about healthy living and...
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Mayor, I see that we get 10,000 points if you do a video. So does that mean one video, or do you get to video every workout for the next four months?
You want me to do a vlog? I don't think people want to see my face that much, but we can do something, absolutely.
That's 10,000 points. That's a lot.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to do something like that, too.
All right.
I've got an excellent social media department that'll jump all over that. All right, so there's no action on this. Okay, well, thank you, Janice. Thank you for bringing this back up, and Leah, I encourage all to be involved. Thank you, folks. Moving forward, item number, we are, six, Consideration Action Regarding Recommended for Approval of a Public Visual Art Policy and Procedures. For that, Director of Community Services Keith Reinhardt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can everyone hear me? Just want to make sure Dolph has a shock collar, because he says I've been talking too loud, so he may activate it at any minute. We're bringing to you today a public visual art policy and procedures. We currently don't have one in place, but it's, I think it's very important that we have one. The reason we have one is to establish an art policy so we can accept and acquire artwork, either by commission, loan, as a gift. The policy, you know, it'll provide guidelines for existing artwork, commissioning artists to do work, like we've recently done, and sponsoring temporary art exhibits in the city. You've seen some municipalities where they've had a famous artist come in and had a temporary display of their art, whether it be at, you know, some cities have had them at libraries, rec centers, wherever they may be. Putting the policy together, we looked at a number of different cities and how they do it. We can create the wheel, or we can look at how some other communities did it. There's some pretty extensive ones out there. The city of Southlake has one that's, I think, 67 pages. I think that's a little overkill from what's in there, but there's a, looked at a lot of different public art policies, literally from all over the U.S., you know, from Minnesota, Ohio, North Carolina, various other places, too, and kind of came up with this. Fortunately, this policy's only about nine pages, so it's a little bit easier to read, and it's a little simpler to read. Some of the things it includes in there is about funding, we talked about, whether it's, you know, public funds, contributions, grants, fundraising, the maintenance and protection and display of the artwork, the types of projects we can accept. You know, there's many ideas on what is art, and this policy will help us, as a municipality, decide what it is that, what the city wants in our community for art, our view, approval process, contractual agreements. We, that item's in there, and there's some information on there I'll get to in just a second. The selection criteria and responsibilities of the artists and donors. It's a detailed document. It's only about nine pages, but it's, I think it's pretty thorough. It also includes, we've worked closely with our law firm, Bren James, I believe his name was James, helped us with this, and we have two agreements in here, and both of these agreements are not, I don't want to say generic, but they're letting you know what the art display agreement can look like, and also what the transfer of artwork can look like, because the recommendation of our attorney was that it would be, it would be best if it was suited directly towards that specific artist, because every piece of art, every piece, whether it's a mural, whether it's, whatever it may be, painted, I guess that mural's painted, but whatever, or sculpture, whatever that may be, specific towards them. This document will help protect us moving forward.
Excellent. Thank you.
And help guide us also.
Counsel, questions? Questions for Keith?
So, this is, sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
This is a question for Bren. In light of some controversial art pieces around the country, in which city councils have had to take action to remove those art pieces, I see that we do have deaccession addressed in here. We have removal of public art, but I also see that that falls back on the responsibility of the city council. In particular, don't like the idea of us making the decision on what goes away when someone else is making the decision on what goes up, like Keep Saginaw Beautiful.
Sure.
Is there, is there kind of a, best to describe this, is there a safety mechanism that we could build into this agreement with the artist, that there is a cultural sign-off outside of the KBS before it's recommended to council? I mean, I really hate to be that snowflake about it, but at the end of the day, it's, artwork becomes pretty freaking controversial and can...
It's very subjective and pretty controversial. I agree. I mean, I think, unless we were to establish a subcommittee of council or assign oversight responsibility to another advisory board to provide a recommendation and really determine whether or not there's a community concern, I do think the final decision is most appropriately situated with the council.
Well, I agree that ultimately the council makes the decision, but what I would like to know is that the piece of art that's being recommended doesn't have some very strange nuance to it that KBS doesn't pick up.
Sure.
Somebody else doesn't pick up, but there is a cultural review committee that they can scrutinize the piece before it gets approved, and then the first day, somebody recognizes they're driving down Main Street, and somebody is completely offended by the art piece.
In some of our other client cities, there is an arts and cultural advisory committee. Sometimes it's consolidated with the parks committee. Sometimes they serve as separate roles, and the qualifications for appointment to the committee often will involve an art-related background. And so that's how I've seen that matter addressed in other cities. In terms of your authority, it's rather limitless in terms of how you want that review process to go, but as far as a possible solution, that's how I've seen it done elsewhere.
I'm just thinking that, for example, our mural that is now on the original fire station, I can't imagine anything in there being offensive to anybody. But who knows? I mean, these things come out of the woodwork, and I would just, I would like to know that within the agreement, or at least within our own processes, the Keep Saginaw Beautiful Committee has the opportunity to engage cultural review before they bring it to us, and they can answer the question, have you submitted this for cultural analysis?
Sure, sure. I mean, and that, this is just the policy at this point. The agreement's going to be subject to negotiation on a case-by-case basis. If we want to augment the policy with some sort of cultural review process, I think that's certainly doable. I don't have language, obviously, to suggest this evening, but that's something that we could do, and this could be tabled and addressed and brought back, or alternatively, we can bring it back as amendment.
As an amendment.
Yes.
Keith, have y'all just, go ahead. You have something?
I do have some language on that, and I'll get that to Bren for his review on the cultural review.
So could we review and approve tonight and then just amend at a point in the future?
I'm fine with that.
That's good. Any other questions or comments? Everybody okay with that plan? Y'all, go ahead, Cindy.
I just thought that, you know, as short of a document as this is, I thought it was very comprehensive, and I think Section 3C covers a lot of, I think, what you described, the guidelines for review. It does set some standards in there about, you know, what we will and will not accept and...
Oh, on the agreement itself, or the policy?
On the policy. So, you know, I felt pretty comfortable with what, you know, KSB had put together, and I think that probably addresses some of your concerns.
Yeah, I think that, I think just limiting it to KSB without having the cultural review, there is a very nuanced process and curation where you have a number of representatives from different cultures, because we're a multicultural society...
Right.
...that have an opportunity to throw darts at the artwork, because we don't want the artwork to show up, and we have alienated an entire group of people with that art. And I don't think that what this says addresses that. And that's what that, in my mind, that's what the cultural review process addresses.
Okay.
So if you've got some language that touches that, I would much prefer that being in there as we are adopting a written policy.
Of course.
All right, any other questions?
Mayor, if I could...
Yes, sir.
...point out real quick, we do, we've had, Keep Saginaw Beautiful has done a lot of work this year, working with artists, and we have one of our amazing artists here in the audience, Erika Rosa, who's done some unbelievable artwork in our parks, and we look forward to working with her in the future on more projects.
Can she be recognized?
Actually, she put in a request to talk, and I was going to ask her to call her forward if you'd still like to speak.
That's awesome.
Come on.
Do I need to say my name and my address?
Please.
Okay. So my name is Erika Rosa, and my address is 10461 Hideaway Trail, Fort Worth, 76131. So we're in Fort Worth, but we definitely identify with Saginaw. So I'm here on behalf of The Art Place, which is a nonprofit organization that is here in Saginaw, and so I know that some of you kind of know what we're about. We just wanted to be here to say thank you so much for letting us to work together and to do the projects in the park, and I know some of you have seen that, but I wanted to share just a little bit of some of maybe the behind-the-scenes things that maybe you haven't seen or know about The Art Place. And so when we started the project in the park during the day, and, you know, in the summertime, and there's people walking by, and we would just invite them, hey, you know, you want to come? You want to paint this part? And they'd be like, I'm not an artist, I can't do it. And we'd say, no, you can, you can paint this part green, because it's participatory. And so that's really what we're all about, is that being creative is for everybody, it's not just for, you know, for visual artists, that we're all involved. And so we would have these teenage boys, you know, walking by, and they'd be, you know, kind of, what are you doing? And so we'd invite them over, and then they'd start putting their handprint, you know, in there, and I could overhear them talking, and they said, this is so cool, this makes it feel like it's our park, you know? And that's just really what The Art Place is about. I mean, I had a gentleman who, you know, I was out there priming the surface, and he lives right there next to the park, came over to me, we started a conversation. He's not an artist necessarily, he works on construction a little bit, but he got his, he got his weed eater, and he brought, you know, some water out for us, and he started, you know, kind of prepping the surface and helping, and he came out every day, and he ended up being on the ground and, you know, kind of helping paint part of it, and just amazing. And afterwards, he came up to me, and, you know, and he handed me some cash, and he was like, hey, you know, please keep doing this, you know, buy more supplies, you know, keep doing this, because it promotes that sense of community. And so that's kind of where The Art Place started, and so it's getting bigger, and there's lots of people, in fact, you know, a lot of the people that are here are from The Art Place, and they're involved in this, and so it's gotten too big for my home or too big for other things, and so we're looking for a place, a building, either to lease, or eventually, we would love to just kind of hope to purchase and buy a place that's here in Saginaw, where we can have open mic nights, where we can have little theater, you know, productions, small scale, where we can have classes, you know, for kids, adults, teens, and just kind of, you know, I've had so many people come up to me and say, you know, I didn't, I used to do art, or I didn't really think I was creative, but since this has happened, I have been doing it again, or, you know, it's just really inspired them. And so we are so grateful, and we just want to show our support for what you guys are doing, and just for you to use us as a resource, you know, in any way, or to partner. We are going to be a nonprofit, and so we're working on that paperwork, and so that's kind of our intent, and so we just want to say thank you, and if there's anything that we can do to help, you know, this process along, that we'd be really grateful.
Well, that's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. We love the art.
That's really cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I can mess up a paint-by-number set, and it was great to see what she had done out in the park. I mean, you know, I just, I don't even paint the house.
You can now.
Yeah.
Have put some outlines on. And one of the things that I like that Erika has done is that she's brought a sense of community. People are getting out more, I mean, right, just in time with the Texas Health thing that we did, you know, I could see, you know, doing an outdoor project and getting that 15,000 point and kind of backing you off of the video. But the fact that she's been able to have people come up and say, wow, this is now my park, and I want to protect it, I own this park, I think is just a gift that we didn't expect to receive from The Art Place.
It's not just art, like visual art, you know, woodworking, crafting, and painting, and, I mean, just every, all kinds of things, but it's not limited to...
Not just painting, it's all kinds of arts. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for educating us as well. And thank you, Keith, and thanks to the Keep Saginaw Beautiful Committee for this, and we, let's move forward. This is awesome. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion on this.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consideration action regarding the approval of the public visual art policy and procedures.
Thank you, Charles. Charlie, second. All those in favor raise your hand here? Those opposed? Excellent. Let's move forward, y'all. Thank you. All right, item number, we are on, number seven, Consideration Action Regarding Acceptance of Right-Away Dedication Deed and Temporary Construction A easement from Walmart Real Estate Business Trust. For that, Rick Trias, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My whole purpose for putting this on the regular agenda is just to show appreciation of Walmart, and we have discussions with them to dedicate, really, just a little under 1,400 square feet. I was asking about what they would require in terms of appraisals, et cetera, and they said, oh, no, we're going to dedicate that free of charge just to help the community. So I just recommend that we accept with appreciation.
Excellent. Counsel, any questions?
Just to confirm, though, this will help, once the overpass is built, it will help queuing into Walmarts. Will this be for a deceleration lane, or is this just temporary construction?
It is deceleration lane to get out of the three lanes, to be able to make a right turn in the two western... To get out of the three lanes, to be able to make a right turn in the two westernmost driveways at Walmart.
So it's an economic advantage as well?
It is. It will help circulation and access to Walmart.
Safety and economic advantage. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the right-of-way as presented.
I second.
I'll second. All those in favor right hand? All those opposed? Excellent. Thank you, Rick. Please pass on our thanks to our folks at Walmart. We appreciate that. All right, moving forward. Item number eight, at 6:50, we will recess into a workshop. Item number nine, discussion regarding recommendation from the Citizens Bond Committee. There are several things going on in here. Number one, I would like to request another consultation with attorney. I spoke with Burmatt earlier to discuss this item specifically. So we'll be brief. Pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, at 6:50, we're in executive session. We will return shortly. All right, so at 6:59, we're back from executive session. We're here to discuss item nine, discussion regarding recommendation from Citizens Bond Committee. Mr. Farr?
Yes, I would like unanimous consent from the council that we pull project priority number eight, the East Bailey-Boswell to East McElroy North-South Collector, from further consideration during this bond program. Do I have consent? Consent?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Patrick. All right, so moving forward. So can we put this bond, this list, up on the screen? This one? The spreadsheet? Yeah, there you go. So this is the list, and we'll scratch out the very bottom one. So this is the list we got from the Citizens Bond Committee. This was their recommendation. It contains now seven items. I had eight, so now I had seven items, the top seven items are ones we will discuss. Up to many different numbers, there's many different options as well from the bond committee. So I will, I'll just list them real quick, what they said. So central fire station relocation, Knolls Drive reconstruction, phase one, combination library senior center, renovate existing library city hall complex, parks improvement, Knolls Drive, phases two and three, and West McElroy, phase three. So that's the items that the bond committee discussed and sent forward to us. All right, so council, how would we like to proceed? We've got a couple items, a couple options on our table. Ultimately, this needs to lead to us calling a bond election. The preference would be, at least my preference would be, for that to be in May. To do that, we need to call it by February, the, I think it was...
Fourteenth?
Fourteenth. We need to call the election by February the fourteenth. We discussed before having an election in November, this being an election year, I don't think that's a great idea. Does anybody else want to do that? I mean, this is...
I think it depends. Mr. Mayor, I think there are some opportunities that presented themselves very late in the presentation process to our community groups that I think we should further discuss. And I see that we have representatives from the school district and from the YMCA who were folks that initiated those discussions. I'm glad that you guys are here tonight, and I hope that you're able to participate in this. I have several questions. So the only reason that I could see this moving back is that if the electorate feels that they would want to see agreements in place before we present a bond to the public, in other words, we're able to reference certain agreements, but I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to create just a memorandum of understanding and present that to the community and still meet the May election, do it by February. It's just going to take some fast work and some commitments from three different parties that came kind of late to the process. But I think the savings that are presented there, the opportunities from a facilities perspective that are there are very well worth considering, and I do want to talk through those tonight.
Sure. Yeah, my fear with the November election is that this would get lost in the weeds.
Oh, my gosh.
There's going to be a lot going on in November. So I think...
I agree.
I would prefer, in the council's opinion, to have this in May, where it would be just a school and city focus. What does the rest of the council think on that? Mary?
I don't have a hard and fast opinion, but I do think the opposite view should be expressed, that since our city, as well as most cities, have such a low turnout on just the municipal elections, you, you know, I mean, you, we have to do a guessing game. But I mean, do we really want to put that decision in the hands of so few people, where if they come out in November and vote for president and congressmen and senators, you will have a much bigger pool of people who have the opportunity to let their views be known on the bond election? So I can't see into the future. But it seems to me like the more people that vote A for sure, you get a better feel, you get more response to know how people feel than if something as pitiful, which has happened, I doubt it would happen this time, because it was just a runoff election, but as pitiful as having a 1% of the voting public, voting on the last election that we had. I just can't see us allowing such a small portion of our city to make such huge decisions.
What does the rest of the council think? Thank you, Mary. Cindy, what are your thoughts?
I'm inclined to agree with Mary on this, especially since we're talking still $90 million. Personally, I would like to sit down and look at more details about how we're going to be spending the money on each of those projects, see if there's any way that we could cut this down. You know, we discussed in previous meetings that $40 million bond would not affect the taxes that people are going to be paying. Now we're looking at another 50 to 60 million more, and that's going to have a definite impact on what our citizens are going to be paying. And I think just to throw this out there is not a smart decision on our part. I think we need to do more homework on this, and I don't think we need to be rushed to do that homework.
Charlie?
I think I'm going to agree. It's a lot of money that we're going to have to ask the taxpayers to pay, including myself, because I live here.
We all live here.
Yes.
But, you know, you don't want to rush into it, I wouldn't think. And that's, you know...
Of course she said.
Okay. Valerie?
I feel the same way.
You're up for November? Mr. Farr?
I see pros and cons both directions. And just to continue in the devil's advocate role, during a presidential election, anything that's not on the top of the ticket becomes more of a visceral response than a deliberate response. So, yeah, you get a higher voter turnout, but by the time you get down past, you know, Republican nominee XYZ, the pen gets a little faded. And unfortunately, municipal bonds are, even our seats sitting here on council, although they would not be up in November, they tend to get drowned out in a presidential election. That's a con, there's no doubt about it. The other con is, is I'm not sure where these guys sit in terms of clocks. I mean, this, the opportunity that we're talking about presented itself because of what I'm going to characterize as a mistake on the part of the city of Fort Worth. They've created an opportunity for us that I think we should take advantage of, but it's put them kind of in a lurch, where they have money appropriated in their budgets, they've got a timetable that they're managing. I don't know where they stand on that timetable. If we push it back to November, is that going to jeopardize this opportunity? And that's one of the questions that I have for these folks. If it is going to jeopardize the opportunity, then I think the dilution of effort on the part of the electorate is not worth compromising this opportunity, in my mind. So, I mean, let's ask them the question and see what they say. If they say, you know, if it goes too far into the future, we lose our commitments and we have to take it out to a bond in three years, I don't know. I don't know what the answers are. But I'm on the fence, folks. I'm on the fence until I hear that response.
All right, thank you. Mr. Beasley?
Yes, I would like to hear from them to see where they're at, what their timetables and things like that.
Okay. Go. Yes, Mary?
Not to beat a dead horse. But just to point out one other thing, and it sounds like I'm way for waiting till November. You know, I can see good and bad in both situations. But I'm quite sure the city will be doing a lot of advertising about the bond election, no matter when it happens. So I think there will be interest that perhaps they will still vote in November. In other words, it'll be talked about quite a bit and quite a bit of advertising about it.
They'll vote, you're right. It will be a larger turnout in November. I just don't know if folks would take the time to read what is so far down the ballot, at the very, very bottom of the ballot. I see them voting straight ticket for whatever and then moving on, maybe not even clicking our boxes. I don't know. That would be my concern. Yes, would be a larger number, be a better representation. I'm all for more voter turnout. I see a May election as a focused, concentrated city and school.
Well, this is January, February, March, April, and we've got to tell all the citizens and everything in three months?
We've got to call the election in February.
February the fourteenth.
So we, no, time is short. I mean, the real argument for delaying November, the biggest one, is to give us more time on this, to make some hard decisions.
Well, I think the citizens deserve that, but that's just my opinion.
Well, what I'm hearing is, I'm hearing at least four that are definitely for November. Is that what I'm hearing? One, two, three, four? That's majority. So I'm thinking, November it is.
Would that sway the majorities?
Would that sway the majority's opinion? I, I mean, if it, if it's not going to sway the majority's opinion, then...
I would like to hear what they say, and perhaps, I'm not sure.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and throw it out to district. I think the district, you guys currently have a, a relationship with TCC. Is there a termination timeline on that? When is your last day in the pool? Do you know?
I don't know the exact date, but the, the district mayor member, we can maybe one of them work, but then...
Okay.
This is line on our act of law, so we're here to participate, discuss whatever we need to do.
Okay, so the district's flexible?
Yes.
Why? Are you guys flexible?
Yeah, I think so. But that is, you don't want to go slower than you can, you're asking, there's no deal right for us, because that's obviously what the council, they're our partners in this stuff, so.
Okay.
I have a question.
So, so, Mr...
I have a question.
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yes, Gabe.
Just one comment. If, if the bond election were to move to November, there'd be tax rate implications. We have capacity within our existing tax rate, so we could be in a situation where the tax rate comes down, and we have to come to voters and say, we want to move it back up. Just something to consider.
What, Valerie?
Have we made an agreement with the YMCA?
We have nothing. No. There was all discussion. We have done nothing. We're discussing it right now for the first time in open council. So, so, council, so we've got these, as I mentioned, seven projects. The eighth is the one that we're talking about, is, is the YMCA project. Do we want to bring that forward and discuss that? The council would like to hear from some of that information right now. We have not heard, the bond council heard that, but they did not hear much of it as it was late in the process. Does council want to consider that as an addition to this bond package? Mary?
I do, but I also want to point out that the committee itself doesn't expect for us to approve all of these. They asked, in their opinion, the top five.
Right.
I didn't know if everybody noticed that, but I would like to consider the Y and the school district proposal.
Okay. Then if we want to do that, Gabe, do we have, you have anything presented, or do you want to, want to bring the, the YMCA folks up to give a, answer a couple of questions?
So, I had, I had forwarded some, some documents to be presented and as part of this discussion. I'd like to talk through that. It's, it's really going to lead into the questions that I have for these folks that are here tonight, so...
I just have one quick comment regarding the other projects. So, as far as the information, in fact, the council member emailed me late this afternoon. You have seen all the information, all the cost estimates before. Those have not changed, facility costs, Knolls costs, conceptual design, we talked about that this summer. I emailed that out to y'all. It's the same information that the, the bond committee saw, so there's, there'll be no changes as far as information wise from staff.
Okay.
Do you remember when you emailed that information?
Yeah, just this afternoon, because I received a email.
About 3:30 this afternoon.
Yeah, very recent.
The email that you sent out earlier?
We got it.
In response to the request from the council member?
Correct. I sent out all the documents requested.
Okay.
The full council was copied. And again, all those, all that information has been presented at previous council meetings, in public meetings, as well as the bond committee, so it's nothing new there.
Okay.
So, so there are, yeah, and that's a good point, there are seven other action, action, potential items on this list. As Mary, as Mary said, the committee was not expecting us to approve all of them. It doesn't, you know, we approve it, but then citizens have to vote on it, so it's really not, we're not saying all these will be approved at all. Let's discuss briefly, what, I guess my question now is, what other information do we need before we can make harder decisions? For example, the central fire station. I know there's been discussion on this, what other information and questions would we have from staff to help us make a better decision on this item? I'd like to create a list of sort of action items for Gabe and staff moving forward, you know, I want this, this, and this to help me make a decision on this. So, council, what questions do you have on that central fire station that Gabe and, and the staff can look into and get better, deeper dive information for, for council?
Well, I'd like to review the documentation again. I can do that in the next couple of days and get some questions together.
Okay. What do we, what, what are we missing? I guess my question is. I know we've talked about costs per square foot, we've caught up, talked about size, what other things. What other pieces of information do we not have that council sees as a hole on any, on these? And it could be for any of this stuff as well. I just want to make sure that we've got the information, we need to make a good decision going forward, and I want to, I want to make sure Gabe can provide that to us over the next few days, weeks.
Just one quick thing on the fire station that came up with the bond committee. So, there was some sticker shock for all of us. There was, one of our bond committee members works in Keller, Keller Fire Chief, in fact. They're doing renovations on some existing stations at 375 a square foot. As a planning number, we put 450 a square foot. If we're talking a year out, I think those numbers hold, and everybody was in agreement. Richland Hills, and I can send this to the council, is bidding a, a fire station much smaller, but at 450 a square foot. So, I, I know there was some heartburn with the cost, but the cost estimates are good, and I think with any of these projects, it's better for us to err on the side of caution and ask for, you know, what we think we can get the project built for. We're certainly going to hope that bids come in far less.
I think that the, I think the consensus issue originally was new fire station versus just renovating the existing fire station. I think that was the original consensus issue. I, Gabe, I, I don't know that there is a issue amongst the council about parametric cost for a new fire station, and, and I can, I'll concur that I, I've done some market sampling with, with general contractors and construction managers I work with in the Dallas-Fort Worth metroplex area, cost for fire stations in this region range between 380 and 480 a square foot. So, it's certainly within that price range. Now, if you were to go out to rural Podunk, West Texas, where we could throw up a sheet metal building, I mean, we could probably see a fire station for 180 bucks a square foot, but that's not what's being built in cities like Saginaw. I mean, look at the building we're in right now. It would be, it would not be nice for us to put our fireman in a, our panel building across the street for 180 bucks a square foot. So, if we're going to build a new fire station, I think we just need to strap ourselves in for a $400 a square foot building.
And also, that building's got to withstand weather conditions as well.
Oh, oh, yeah. No doubt.
I don't know which F, which tornado F we're talking about, but one of them and a lot, so that's a consideration as well for why it's so expensive. So, fire station notwithstanding, are there other questions that really hold you see in this? You know, I, for example, council member, do you have a question on, you know, why are we doing this, or what's this, why does this cost this? Is there anything we're missing, I guess, data wise?
Well, one of the things that I'd like to know is, I mean, what they gave us was their wish list, and what is it on this wish list that they could live without that would help save some tax dollars for our citizens? And we've never really received an answer that they're willing to sacrifice anything off of these presentations.
So, they said the top five, right?
So, Mayor, just regarding facilities, if you'll recall, and it's been almost a year now, back in March with the facility assessment, facility assessment was done based on the Saginaw of the future, right? So, any facility we build is going to be built for our ultimate population, 30,000 plus or minus 5,000, so...
With ADA as well.
With ADA improvements, with new building code improvements, you know, not to harp on the fire station again, but two or three sets of consultants have said, the drainage issue at that location can't be fixed. We're going to be in a scenario where if we ever have to make a modification, we open up walls, we're going to have to get temporary trailers and put firefighters in temporary trailers. We're kind of on borrowed time there. So, you know, we can, fits the direction of the council, we can look at a renovation of the existing site, if that's what you'd like. I think there's an opportunity cost to, to get a taxable business there and to generate, you know, sales tax, community amenity, but it's not, it's not going to be cheap.
Also, the value of the real estate as well.
Correct. Value of the real estate is approximately a million and a half for that whole block, which would include the senior center.
You're getting rid of part of Saginaw's history.
Yeah, I agree.
That's what bothers a lot of citizens, is that y'all are, y'all are really ready to get rid of Saginaw's history, and that's not a good thing.
I don't think anybody wants to get rid of the history. I think they want to get rid of the fact that firefighters got to wake up with wet feet and go run calls to help people.
That's only happened about three times.
The chief could tell you that it's happened far more than that, be happy to go into details later.
Talk to him. Thank you.
Well, again, I kind of like to see if there are places that we could cut. I mean, we've asked for that before, and not just on the fire department, but on any of these things.
So, just so I'm clear, what do you mean by, what do you mean by cuts? You mean square footage, or...
There's items, positions and spaces and off of the municipal buildings presentation, things that might, that we could live without.
Sure.
Don't have to have, and we've never seen anything on that. For Knolls Drive, I know you have a couple of roundabouts in there. I've heard several citizens say that they don't want the roundabouts that close to a neighborhood. Did we look at the cost options and the traffic options, and where's that information comparing those two to each other?
Yeah, we, we can, we can get that.
Just, just options, not this is what you're going to get.
So, I think, well, I think we need to take a step back, Mayor, and, and, unique situation that we're all in here in, in bond planning and communicating our bond package to the community is that, I, I hate to say it, if there's one of us on this council that is against any one thing on this bond package, the chances of it passing is small. So, we, we have got to understand that as a group, that there are needs that we have to address. These are not needs for the next five years, these are needs for the next 30. And, and I, and I'm totally, I totally appreciate where, Cindy, where you're coming from, and Valerie, where you're coming from with respect to the existing fire station. I know I've, how often have I been over there trying to rack my brain to figure out a way around it? There are, there are nuanced problems with that facility that go beyond just the facility itself, and it's not just about getting your feet wet.
And it's, it's not just about the fire station either.
Oh, no, no, I...
One of the things my concern is, is that we've got this, we passed a bond in 2013 for the bridge for $20 million. That price has already increased, and the citizens are not happy about it, and we, here we are almost seven years later, and we still don't have a bridge. And then we're asking citizens to step up and say, okay, well, we haven't done anything with the 20 million, and now we're asking you for another 90 million, and, you know, if, why don't step up and say something on behalf of the citizens, then I think I'm failing them as an elected leader.
And we have built East Bailey Bowls, so we spent, you know, 18 million dollars to build East Bailey Bowls, that's several miles of road, that was part of that bond election as well. We have not done the bridge.
The bridge.
That's absolutely the big thing that's missing, but we have done. We have spent that money, and there's something to show for that, so that's not entirely true to say that. But, I mean, this is a big number, it's, it's scary to look at the number, but if you look at it over the number of years, I mean, this is not something we would do in a year or 18 months. This, this could be a 10, 12, 15-year project almost to do many of these things. And, and it is something, as we said, to look far into the future, not today, not tomorrow, but 10 years in the future. What do we want Saginaw to look like, and what does Saginaw need? A lot of these are, are not just nice to have, these are need for the, for the city going forward, and that's how I, I'd like the folks to look at it, say, you know, some of these things we really, really need. I, I've been to Knolls when it floods, not even Knolls, but the streets off of Knolls, which I can't recall their names, but that's embarrassing, and that's unfortunate, and that's something we need to fix, and that's just not a cheap fix, unfortunately.
I understand that, too, but I'm, what I'm worried about is we have very little square footage left for businesses to come in here, and I know the, the north is coming in and everything, but eventually, we're going to run out of spaces to build stuff. Are we going to have the tax dollars to support all this stuff? You know what I'm saying? I mean, we're asking our citizens to give up our...
Absolutely. That's why we hired Lewis McLean and went through a few months of the financial projections. So, we're in a very favorable position to be able to issue $40 million worth of new debt in our existing tax rate. I mean, that is, yes.
And that's 40, but this is, this is 90 plus. Todd?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just was writing notes as people were talking, so that's what this is. One, we have certainly got our money's worth out of the building that the fire department is now using. I just wanted to make that point.
We have what?
We've gotten our money's worth out of that building.
Yes.
Two, Dolph, how detailed did the committee get in the type of thing that Cindy's asking for? Did they go deep into, you know, well, we could do this, but no, we shouldn't because of this, and did they have detailed information like that to work with?
The bond committee saw the same information presented to them by the consultants that y'all saw when he made his presentation, and like Gabe said, the, the consultant looked at our population build out and what their professional opinion was based on, on that, of how, basically how many square feet we're going to need for a facility to serve that population. There's all kinds of different uses and square footages, but that's all broken down in the information that's presented to y'all. And then he put his best guess on the cost of what that would, would be. So, that's, that's the same information was presented to the bond committee, and so there was no real discussion on, on that. But back to Gabe's point, the cost of the building is going to be whatever it costs to get it built. The only way you're going to be able to save dollars on that, and we don't have anything extravagant in there, I'm specifically referring from the fire station, is to cut square footage. So, where do you cut the square footage? If this is what we think the square footage needs to be for the ultimate build out, for that facility to serve the ultimate build out of the city. So, you know, we, we've had a history of building functional, good projects, not extravagant by any means, and we can, would expect that this, these future facilities be in the same vein.
And then I had one other point, which was, whatever we decide to put on the ballot, we will do that. Am I not correct that the voters can vote for two out of the five, five out of five, whatever number is on there? They can vote for none of them, one of them, all of them, some of them? So, really, we don't need to be as worried about, we just need to say, here's the things we think really we need and we want and would be a great asset to our city, and then we have to turn it over to the voters. And so, they make the decision. Well, they, you've got too much money in here, or you, or yeah, we like all this stuff. We, we can't see in the future, we can't predict what they're going to do, but we, our job is to put their, here's what we think we want and/or need, and then they, they make the decision.
To Cindy's point, Cindy, this is a big price tag, and I know back in October, we had, we all had this conversation about we either are going to have vision for Saginaw in 20 years, or we're not going to have vision for Saginaw in 20 years. And really, what this bond does is it arms this dais with the opportunity as projects present themselves to do them in the best environments. And, and we can't think of it as we're spending tax dollars immediately upon approval, because we will not issue bonds unless we have to issue bonds. So, I mean, if, if we're taking on, the rate that we burn projects off in this city, at least that I've observed, is about 10 million a year or less. It's not, we're not burning off $25 million worth of work or $30 million worth of work in a year, so we're talking about doing, you know, $90 million worth of bond, but at our burn rate, that's eight to nine years' worth of, worth of churning through projects. And, and what I see, I think the 21 cents that you mentioned on the 60 million is based on today's tax dollar.
Yeah.
That's based on today's valuation.
Yeah, if you do, if you were to issue all that at once, it would have an impact of 21 cents on the...
Yeah, and that's today's valuation.
That's right, and I just wanted to go back and add, make one more point. The list that you see here, the, the council asked the bond committee to prioritize a list of $100 million worth of projects.
That's right.
Right.
Knowing that over the next 10 to 15 years, we can afford to do that based on Lewis McLean's projections. And then they came up with the shorter list of what they'd like to see done sooner, which is the 60, almost 67 million dollars worth. So, again, these are just recommendations. The council can take one project to the voters, they can take 10 projects to voters, that's y'all's decision to make, but we have to be in a position to be able to tell the citizens when they approve these projects, how much and when that's going to affect, affect the tax rate.
Sure. And Dolph, you mentioned build-out. Build-out 35 or 36 thousand, what's our current projection? And what's the timing?
I think it's closer to 30.
30? And what's the timing of that, our latest estimate?
It's only like 8,000 more.
It's in our capital improvements plan.
I know it is, and I can't recall the time.
Yeah, so the X-factor there is when the last big tracks in the city, which we can all count them on one hand pretty much, build out. And most of those are going to have a multifamily component, and some single family. So, you think the Crans Farm property, you think the Square, Levon White's property, that's when, our single-family stuff in the next year probably or so will be pretty well, all the lots that we have platted, be pretty well done.
We're looking at 33,000 by the year 2035.
2035. So, that's 15 years, build-out roughly 15 years. And we're talking that this bond package might take 15 years to complete, actually.
The 100 million for sure would be close. So, I mean, we're, we're changing the wheels on a moving car. Bottom line. That's what we're doing, is we're changing the wheels on a moving car. And I, I appreciate everybody's angst about the price tag, but I, if, if, I want us to think back about Lewis McLean's play sheet. Remember his, the play sheet? What that essentially communicated to us at the time is, we're continuing, and we're on an arc, and have been on an arc, of increasing valuation. At alarming rates here recently, at 10% a chunk. But that's, trend is not ever going to stop, at least in the, in the near five to 10-year future. We're still, I see, going to increase just on current property at the rate of at least 3%. And I know that Lewis's projections were, were very moderate. So, they were at least in the, in the three, I don't know that he, he even went to four, as I recall. It was, okay. So, if he went to four, that, what he was able to show and demonstrate is, as those valuations are going up, that 21 cents that's being quoted today is essentially laying flat over time as we issue bonds. So, today, if we were to issue bonds on all $60 million, yeah, you know what? We just increased everybody's tax rate 21 cents.
But we're not locking.
We're not doing that.
We're not going to do that.
We're not locking in these prices either.
I'm sorry?
We're not locking in these prices either.
Yeah, we, we won't know prices until we have bids in hand.
But, but, these prices include escalation. So, what, what has been built in here is, in the forecasting of these costs, we know that incrementally, the fire station's not going to start for a year and a half. We, we know those things, and we know that other projects are going to start three, four, five years down the road, so there has been an escalation factor applied in the play sheet. So, the play sheet, as you look at it, you'll see incremental increases in those prices to, to at least account for inflationary impact and escalation impact over time. So, I, I don't want to take away the efforts of, of Lewis and what he did to, to bring us to the decision that we were at in October, to make a decision to say, look, bond committee, we want you to look at $100 million. That was a tough decision for all of us at that point in time.
Absolutely.
And I know, I know here, what we're doing is, we're looking at these individual projects, and I, I get sticker shock from time to time, and it requires me to go to my, my network and say, am I nuts? Or is this person nuts? And, and that's the sticker shock I think every one of us experienced. And nobody, nobody should discount that from anybody on the dais, simply because everybody comes from different backgrounds up here, and some folks pay a certain amount for their house, and when they look at, this is what it's going to cost for a fire station, that is impossible to digest. So, I, I think as long as we're looking at this not from the individual program, I mean, should the fire chief have a 900-square-foot office with gold inlay paneling? No?
Don't let him answer that.
Yeah. I, I mean, that's, we're really, what we're really doing here is saying, we need a new fire station, and we're going to need a new fire station in the next 15 years.
Yeah.
Do, do we want to see it at this price? Well, guess what, folks? We're going to have an opportunity to approve a design, we're going to have, we're having an opportunity to approve bids when it comes around. But here, we are casting the vision to at least get the ball rolling for those things to happen. So, and, and what I'm saying in terms of our big-picture think here in this workshop is that we, we really have got to focus on vision and commitment to the community, not to the penny at this point, but managing those pennies in the future, allowing us to have the checkbook. Right now, we don't even have the checkbook. But once we get that checkbook, it's up to us. And quite frankly, this is the importance of the financial policies. And that's the reason you've seen it put back on the work plan. Because once we have a $100 million checkbook, folks, I'm not going to be satisfied with a fly-by-the-seat-of-your-pants financial policy. I won't be. So, $100 million comes our way, we need to have the written policy in place, so we all know what triggers the right questions when the time comes. And I, and I'm sorry to take up so much of this time, I just want to make sure that we, we don't get too bogged down in talking about pennies when we're really talking about 15-year future for our city. And I, and if, if any of that was condescending, I certainly apologize. I didn't intend for that to be. It's just, let's, let's do something great for our city, right here and right now.
What scares me about this, though, is the fact that the voters, and we are the voters as well, but the voters, do they really know that the, the fire hall floods every time it rains?
So.
You know, when you start telling them or showing them that we're going to spend 14.5 or thereabouts for a fire hall, what do you need a fire hall for?
I don't mean to, that's a great point. I don't mean to dominate the, the time at all, but on the, on the community engagement piece, we budgeted this budget year to do some informational-type meetings, town halls. So, staff's role is to provide the information. We don't take a position and say, you vote for this or that. Now, the bond committee, they could do that, and you may well, as elected officials, ask them to be the advocates for the projects. That is not staff's role. One thing I would say, back to the timing issue, if we push to November, our town hall meeting for bond projects gets drowned out in the noise by the, the different colored signs that are in people's yards in November. It's a different dynamic.
And if you do it in May, are you going to have time to do it?
Absolutely, yeah. We can hold town hall meetings, we've got the projects identified, I mean.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I know that you, you began in talking about the fire station going down the list, and it, it certainly exposed some, some internal angst amongst all of us.
And I didn't mean for us to get bogged down, but yeah.
But, but I, I think, I think what you're doing is appropriate. We just, I think it's a good idea for us to identify which of these five that the bond committee said, we'd like to see these. You know, there are three others, one of them we've pulled off. I think it's appropriate for us to say, are we, are we okay with the five that have been recommended? I mean, it's, it's just, in my mind, are we okay with that to start with? I don't have a problem with any of the five that have been recommended by the bond committee. Now, could I turn the screws on a dollar here and a dollar there? I probably could, if I sat down and, and did that today. But I think, in general statement, are we okay with one through five? That's the spirit.
If we do one through five, what's going to happen to six and seven?
Those could be done another day.
Those are necessary, though.
Or we could roll them in. I mean, we could certainly roll them in.
And, and, and one thing to remember that, that we brought up as well, and Charlie asked this question, which is a good question. If we, so let's, let's do a, say 100 million, because that's easy math. If we do a $100 million bond, that doesn't mean we're going to spend all 100 million. If we, if we budget a fire station at 14.5, it may come in at less. We don't know. Have no idea today. But if it comes in less, we will not spend 14.5, we'll spend whatever the real number is. Just because the voters approve 100, 100 million, that's the ceiling. That's the max we can spend. We can spend less. We don't have to issue that debt. We don't have to issue any of it. We can issue 10 million, 20 million, and stop. It's really up to us, but we can, cannot issue more than, that's what, what it means to voter approval. And going back to the tax thing, this just spurred a thought. You know, we said the 21 cents, which is a big shock. When we approved Bailey Bowser project back in, was it 2012?
Yes, it was.
Okay. We said, and I don't remember the tax number, we don't, that we could, we could raise tax rates by a certain number. I don't remember that number, but I think we ended up raising about half that. We didn't eat up all that.
I don't think we even rose them by half that.
We, we had lower.
I can, I can get you that. I think it was the advertisement, just information, was 14 cents, and it, it was not raised.
I said, we, we did, we did like half that or less than half that, didn't we?
Well, the tax rate declined at, at parts during that time.
But we did raise it a couple times, I was on that.
But went back down.
Yeah, so, so.
I happen to have that. It was 14 cents. The first year was supposed to be 4 cents, then 5 cents, then 5 cents, for a total of 14 cents. And it didn't, it, your taxes may have increased due to valuations, but the tax rate due to debt went down.
Okay, so, so just go saying 21 cents now, doesn't mean it's going to go up 21 cents. Things can change, valuations can change. So, that, I guess 21 cents is what we have to say to voters, that's worst case. It will be no worse than that. We're anticipating it will be better based on growth. That's what we're anticipating, but we don't know. I just can't say that for sure. So, keep that in mind, that these numbers, all these numbers are really worst case, so it may not be as intense as it seems. So, just keep that in mind moving forward. One thing I want to go back on, and just to, you know, Dolph mentioned build-out at 2035, that's 15 years from now, roughly 33,000. Is that what you said? Okay. Keep that in mind. A lot of these facilities, we're, we got to plan and think for build-out. And that's, that's not that far in the future, actually. 15 years is pretty close, to, to think forward in the future. So, keep that in mind with all these projects moving forward. So, just some, an overarching theme to keep in mind. And Mayor, you had a question? I don't want to interrupt you, sorry.
Um, just, I might be, this might not be the time to say it, I might be jumping ahead, but someone said something about if, you know, we could put all of these on there. Well, I, I think that if we put $100 million worth of stuff on there, that might create a backlash, and people might just go, heck, no. And just, no, 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 no. You know, I think we could overwhelm them if we put too many things on the list.
Absolutely, no.
I don't know.
Six and seven are necessary. That's what I don't.
Well, but they don't necessarily have to be part of this bond.
But Valerie, wouldn't, we could say one and two are necessary as well, or three and four, or two and eight, or six and four, or whatever, it's those numbers. All these things, none of these were put on there as superfluous items. The bond committee, you know, thought this through pretty heavily. So, they just, they just prioritized. That's what we're saying. So, necessary, yes. That means we do it, we, we don't do them tomorrow, we do them in six years, or whatever. But remember, the bond committee, you know, took a lot of time to look at this. They did not casually go about this. They took this very seriously.
Well, to be clear, we've reduced 100 million just by unanimous consent tonight to 90.
90 million, yeah.
I think a partnership with the district and with the Y affords us an additional $5 million, the way that I've, I've worked through that and want to communicate that tonight. It doesn't get us the 12 and 10, which 22 million, but it turns 22 million now into 17.
You're right, yes.
So, now, now we're narrowing the gap.
Yes.
And if we're going to the voters with a $75 million bond program, and we're able to say, here are the seven projects that we intend to, to execute with 75 million, what the voters are going to hold us to is what we say. Are we going to do the seven projects or not? I mean, this is, this, Cindy rightfully touched on an issue, is the voters still are waiting for the overpass, okay? And, and whether it was 25 people that voted for it, in, in favor of it, or what, it does not matter. What matters is we said we would do it, okay? If we don't do that, it's a stain on us, okay? So, that, I mean, these are hard, hard decisions, especially after the fact, because, let me tell you, when you run out of money and you've told everybody you're still going to build it, where's it coming from?
Right.
I mean, that's, that's the purpose for building in the escalation, seeing a little bit into the future, knowing, and as we get closer to project starts, let me tell you, economics will probably tighten the screws on these projects. It won't be us. It'll be economics.
You have something, Dolph?
Yeah, just one point of clarification. The numbers you have before you are in today's dollars with an escalator built in, that the numbers are probably good for a year or two. But when you go to looking, building a project five, four or five years out, we're going to have to adjust that for an inflation factor. So, those aren't currently included, I don't believe, because we don't know when we're going to be building them.
Yeah, I would add, add to that. I think we used a 20 to 25% contingency. So, you know, if you go for a 10-year program, depending on how you phase that construction, you know, you, you may have to adjust some of those latter years for escalation.
So, you chew into that 25% contingency as part of the.
That's right. Well, you saved the 20% contingency on the year one, but on year 10, if we had a 10-year program, then, then you would want to, we would want to adjust those numbers and massage those if we went with that sort of approach, a 10-year program.
And, and these projects, all seven of them, will not hit the marketplace at the same time. They would hit the marketplace at different intervals. We would be in a position with the checkbook to decide when that happens. And if it's favorable market conditions, obviously, we all want to be clamoring up here to vote yes and get it out for bid. But today, it's not favorable market conditions. I can tell you that right now. It's horrible market conditions if you're building, but.
Construction cost, debt is favorable, you know, issuing.
No, no, that, oh, yeah, that's favorable.
But construction cost, yeah.
Do, do, are, we talked about these seven on the list. Do we want to talk about the YMCA project and get some more information, answer some of those questions?
Please.
Mr. Fox, would you like to approach and?
Sure.
Enter and sign in, please, sir. And thank you for coming and waiting so long on us.
Yes.
So, introduce yourself, tell us who you are.
My name is Doug Fox. I'm the district executive director of the Northwest YMCA.
Thank you, sir.
And I should say that I have Tony Schuman, who's our president and CEO, and then Chris Butler, who's our vice president of operations.
Tony, Chris, thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming, guys. All right, so, we've heard a little about the project. I know you made a presentation to the bond committee. Questions? You want to draft some questions, Patrick, that you've got for this?
Yes, is it, can we pull up the, the two slides that I've put together? So, what, what we have is an opportunity very similar to what we had with Tarrant County back in 2012, where Tarrant County kicked in $4 million towards our overpass project. We now have two entities, the school district and the YMCA, that are at a, in a position where they are willing to kick in $10 million combined into our projects. Taking advantage of that $10 million means that we would have to build a facility that would, would accommodate their programs. Building that facility, in my mind, and what I've, what I've communicated to you is that the city would outright own that building. I, I want to make that clear, that any discussion from this point forward does not suggest that the city would be handing the YMCA $12 million so that they would own a facility. I just want to make that point clear. And the YMCA is still here having this conversation. The fact is, is that the YMCA is interested in partnering with the city of Saginaw, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, simply because this is a, this is an area of great need for their services. And the deeper that they can move into market penetration in Saginaw, the better, as I understand it. So, it's an opportunity for them, it's an opportunity for us to take, I'm going to say it this way, take your $5 million and, and facilitate something for you to have for and, and facilitate something for you to have for a period of time into the future, whatever that might be. It's negotiable, as I understand it. At the same time, the school district has earmarked five million dollars towards that same facility. Those two commitments, and Dwayne, is that, is that number still good, five million?
Yeah.
Okay. So between the two, we have two entities saying, hey, Saginaw, if you guys are in the bond program business these days, we would like to infuse your bond program with ten million dollars. It's hard for me to say no to ten million dollars.
And that, the money from the school district is specifically for a naterium?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the, the thing, the thing that the naterium has to offer the city is, we don't have that anywhere except TCC. And there is not one Saginaw citizen that I know of that, that really takes advantage of that, not that I know of. I know the school district currently has a relationship with them, so the students that are in the swim program get to take advantage of it. But we would be creating facility that is a state-of-the-art recreation facility with an indoor swimming pool. And the crazy thing about it is, is with the dynamics of the ten million dollars being infused into the bond program, creates a scenario where we would have a sixty thousand square foot facility, the sixty thousand?
Yeah.
Sixty thousand square foot facility that would have five thousand square foot of dedicated space for our senior citizens. We would have the opportunity to renovate our existing recreation center and add an additional three thousand square feet onto it dedicated for senior citizens, bringing a total of eight thousand square feet between two different facilities, dedicated specifically to senior citizens. We'd have a twenty-seven thousand square foot library, which is almost three times the size of our ten thousand square foot library today. And we could do that for five million dollars less than what's being proposed for projects three and four on our list. So we have project three, which is a combination library and senior center for twenty-four million dollars. We have the renovation of the library to convert it into public works for fifty-eight, for five-point-eight million. That's, that's thirty million dollars. And we could have this with an indoor pool with a state-of-the-art recreation facility.
For thirty-four million.
For twenty, twenty-five million.
You've got twenty-two million for the naterium, twelve million from Saginaw.
Yeah, only twelve million coming from Saginaw. That's broken up. It's twenty-two, twenty-two million total for the facility.
Okay.
We're only contributing twelve million. The school district and the YMCA are contributing ten.
Okay, so we're going to own the building.
Yes.
We're going to lose our employees.
How will we lose our employees?
Are they going to hire employees that are...
That's a deal point.
Would they be city employees?
I, I don't know at this point.
Containing city employees?
This is certainly something that can be worked out in an operating agreement.
That would be important.
Are the citizens going to get a discount on the...
Again.
It's not part of the negotiation.
Something...
I mean, we've had relationships with the North Park YMCA, the Hood County YMCA, and that's typically, you know, the, the idea would be that we would sit down with you guys and kind of negotiate what that would look like. But yes, there would be a discount for the Saginaw.
And so they'd pay taxes to the city?
No, they would not pay taxes. This would be our, our facility.
Comparable to what we have right now.
So basically, what you're saying is that we're going to build it, it's only going to cost them each five million, they're going to get use of it, because the school's not going to pay for using it, right?
They paid five million to use it.
Okay, but how much would they pay it if they were going somewhere? How long would that five million?
I don't know. But absent the five million, this isn't even a possibility. But what we've gained, we, we have, we have future-proofed to total build out here.
I think what Valerie's asking is, the school district's going to also have to pay membership fees like our citizens would, even though we'll...
As far as the school district's concerned, the, the students, the operating agreement with the students for the swim team, it is their pool, so the students will use the pool as they need it, you know, whenever their swim, swim practices are. We will provide the lifeguards free of charge during their swim meets, and they will provide, they will reimburse us for the lifeguards during swim practice. We have a little bit higher expectation from a safety standpoint than most school districts, if you will, as it relates to swim teams. So we'll have more people up on the deck keeping the kids safe.
Well, I can tell you that as we approach thirty-three thousand, our twenty-seven thousand square foot recreation center will not be enough. So we might as well add that to the bond program. So what I'm saying is that this is an opportunity to gain the facility at a less cost.
What about the timing wise? We talked about it earlier. What about timing as far as, we, we had mentioned, in May bond election, what if we push this to November? How would that impact this project, or the feasibility of this project?
I don't think it changes the feasibility, it just changes the timing.
Okay. Think all, all parties would still be interested if, if it moved out?
I don't want to speak to the school district, but I'd say the answer's yes.
Okay.
I think really what's at play here is, is this council needs to see essentially a memorandum of understanding between the parties that outlines either the employment issues, the rate issues, the, the, all of those things that seem to be sticking points, and it put in black and white.
I think one of the things that you said, Ms. Tancrely, is the idea of who's building it. I, I do believe that we would be the one building it. We have the ability to, to build it for cheaper. I mean, based upon the discussion with, with Gabe and Dolph, we seem to, just based upon the way that we build our YMCA, there's a lot of things that we don't have to go through, not being a municipality. And so we've been able to build our Hood County YMCA for under three hundred dollars a foot, whereas for some other rec centers, I think one of the quotes was for fifty or something like that.
But y'all just said it would be a municipal building, didn't you?
That was for a fire station.
But didn't y'all just say it would be a municipal building?
Yeah, and, and I might lean on the city attorney, because there'd be greater than thirty percent public money, I think we'd have to advertise it per public, you know, follow competitive bidding guidelines.
Competitive bidding, because that's, that's correct, because public dollars would be used in it.
Yeah.
But obviously, we can delegate that to a private party in order to facilitate the process.
And so with it, with it being a municipal building, are we liable for all the insurance and all that stuff, all those fees coming in?
My understanding, so, so again, we've done this with the city of Fort Worth for North Park, we've done this with Hood County and Granbury. And so what we need to have is span of control. So the ability to operate, we are fully insured. So if something happens, I think we are responsible, because it's our operation that we're managing.
Now, I'm not talking about if something happens, I'm talking about the building itself and all that. Are you going to pay all the insurance and all the upkeep and all that stuff on that building?
Yes, we would manage the building. Typically, so the agreement that we have, for example, with the school district is a, is an operating agreement for a, a maintenance agreement, if you will, for high-end stuff. So what we've agreed with the school district in our MOU with them is that we will each put in twelve thousand five hundred dollars into a fund, if you will, so that in, in five years, if the air conditioning system in the naterium fails, then we would have the money that we would both would have set aside. Now, we're not going to hold their money, they're not going to hold theirs, but we would have an operating agreement for just major items. The day-to-day stuff, we would be managing all of that.
Okay.
That's a question.
My name is Chris Butler, Vice President of Operations for the YMCA of Fort Worth. And I currently office out of Benbrook Community Center YMCA, and it is a city...
Do you mind to step up and speak? People at home will want to hear what you're saying.
Yeah, so I, I office out of the Benbrook Community Center YMCA, and that is a building that was built by the city of Benbrook, and we handle all the day-to-day operations. So at the end of last year, our DECTRON system, which is our, a dehumidification system for pool and out, we covered the cost of the two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars to replace that system.
Not the Benbrook taxpayers?
Correct. So we handle all the day-to-day operations. If something goes wrong with HVAC, anything like that, we handle all that. That comes out of the operation of the facility. So that, all that stuff is built into the daily operations.
And something that I had mentioned to the YMCA in terms of dues, is, you know, I, I envision a few things being sticking points, and dues are probably one of them, especially for senior citizens. There is, I can't see a reason why we can't put limitations on Saginaw citizens' dues that are commensurate with other communities that are our size, especially tax-based. Whatever they're paying for their recreation, I can't see us paying more for that in same services. So if we're offering an indoor pool, albeit it will be somewhat limited to what we could use at certain times, because you guys have committed five million dollars towards this thing, and I would see that in a twenty-year lease term, that's twenty-seven thousand dollars a month, is what you're paying over time in a twenty-year lease. And twenty-seven thousand dollars a month, times two, you and the school district, we're starting to talk about over fifty thousand dollars a month in lease, is what this ten million dollars represents. So at the end of, say, twenty years, where you would have a lease expire, it's about the same timeframe in which we would pay this facility off in bonds in twenty years. Now, you'd have a facility that's twenty years old, we'd be eligible to start negotiating something else with both entities in twenty years. I don't think any one of us have, know what's going to happen to us in twenty years, right? So I, I think we can put a backstop on an agreement where this agreement lasts for twenty years, and here's, here's the way it lays, and at year nineteen, we begin negotiations for the next agreement, or it goes to a year-to-year, I don't know. I, I don't know what that looks like in the future, but this is the reason that I mentioned, they're moving parts. I think we need to negotiate them. I think we need to have a black and white document in front of us, at least a memorandum of understanding, if not agreements in place, before we take this to the community. Because there's, there is, you can't say no to ten million dollars.
Okay, but wait. Let's just take a scenario here. The city puts in twelve million, they each put in five million. One of those entities that put in five million is making all the money, not paying it to the YMCA. They're the ones that are going to be making the money regardless of who uses it, Saginaw residents or anybody else that comes in, they're going to get a money that's, they're in a money-making business.
And we're not a nonprofit organization?
So they're...
We're not a nonprofit organization.
I know about nonprofit. Nonprofit organizations still make money, I know how that works. But anyway, they're going to make the money, they're not going to pay any taxes, the city's put in more money, and they're going to come out ahead. We're going to get a nice building, yeah, but we're going to be...
We also get their five million.
Okay, but they're going to make more than five million.
How do you know that?
We also...
They're running the risk of...
Well, how do you know they're not?
I, I don't.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is that they're running the risk of, of maintaining the facility as well. So we don't know if the pumps of the building are going to go...
We also have all the operational costs, staffing, programming, all those things as well.
There is a, they're running the risk. We're not running the risk. The school district's not, they're running the risk. So it's, it's a, it's a matter of, of equity here. I, I see the YMCA as an equity partner. I don't see them as a, as, I don't see inequity in their relationship. They're running a risk.
It's Mary.
Those businesses are in business, and it's like, make money.
Mary?
Do what? Do what? What'd she say?
Do you have peripheral vision?
I'll show her hand up, yeah.
I have several questions. First of all, I, I think this is a wonderful idea because when you have three partners, enabling a project like this to happen, you could not do by yourself. We could never do this by ourselves. They couldn't do it by themselves, you couldn't do it by yourself. So all three of us coming together, we all come ahead. And the other questions, I have a bunch of questions about the pool. Twenty-five meters, fifty meters, twenty-five yards?
Five meters, like twenty-five yards.
And official sanctioned swim meets can be held, and that would be, are those money-making things, or?
So typically, so my understanding is, the swim teams typically make money up concessions during the swim meet for us. So therefore, we charge eight to get in, and again, this will be something for the school district, so we're going to kind of work on that. What we've agreed to do is provide the lifeguard and recruit to the school district during the swim meets. I think we've set somewhere between four and six. Right now, they only have three high schools, but their full build-out will be a four high school. So we understand when that school come in, there will be more practice time, obviously, and it will be obviously another year of, 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 because it would be another school district using, or another high school.
And then would you...
Dolph, can you speak in the microphone? See, I'm sorry. Yeah.
And would you be putting on swim meets in the summer, or just?
Yes. Typically, there is a YMCA swim meet league, and so right now, the kids from Northwest typically go down to Benbrook to swim, or we go over to Dallas, because we typically don't use our pool at Northwest. Probably won't surprise you, every year, we'll host our own meet at the current facility. But having a facility like this, we would be able to host a few more in our own facility, which, again, are local kids, so kids that are from the Eagle Mountain Saginaw School District. Well, we typically, the role that we play in a, from a swim meet standpoint, oftentimes is the beginners, right? It's the kids who want to try it for the first time. The YMCA is a safe entry into it. And so we've got a lot of kids that, that have been in the YMCA program over the years that are now successful swimmers for the local high schools.
And does the word naterium mean that it's indoor?
Yes.
That's what I thought. And would that pool be available for water aerobics for citizens during the daytime?
Yes, so...
Like every day, or just certain days? Because do, do any of the high school kids use that in, during the school day to practice?
Yeah. Yeah, so right now, and so it's a little bit tentative, but the way that we have it looked at, look at it right now, that, let's say, six-thirty in the morning until eight-thirty, they will be there for swim team. And so then, and then, again, once they get to their fourth high school, they'll also have some practices in the afternoon. And so there'll be a two-hour, two-and-a-half hour block that they will have in the morning and the afternoon. In the middle of the day, will be water aerobics, lap swimming, swim lessons, a variety of different things. And one of the things that we talked together, which, again, is part of the negotiation, is the idea is, is there a specific time for Saginaw seniors to use the pool? I mean, there's a lot of things from a negotiation standpoint that are in play. I, I think I want to kind of just, kind of take a step back and say, the reason why this has happened so late in the day is, is that we met with Todd and Gabe to kind of tell them, this is where we were at with our project, because they were part of the initial feasibility study. And when they said that there was some discussion around a senior center, there's some different things going on, we thought, well, jeez, does it make sense for us to build a senior center a, a couple blocks away where the current location, the center, doesn't make sense for us to work together? And that's really how this all came to be. It wasn't, oh, they've got money, let's come get it. It was, hey, listen, let's not build something a block, or two or three blocks away from each other if we can do something better together.
Can I ask you one question? Why did Fort Worth back out?
They haven't backed out.
Well, they have, they're still up and running?
They're still...
I mean, they're still...
They're, they're still in right now for two million dollars, for where the current location is. And I, and, Tony, you want to speak too?
Hi, my name's Tony Schuman. I'm the president and CEO of the YMCA. It, it's really depending on, on what happens here, whether Fort Worth is in or out. They're, they're interested in partnering with us. We've had a long and great relationship partnering with them. But they recognize that they're not in a position to, to be able to fund something that large in that area. They're, because they're building something a little bit farther down. So they're, they're still interested if we're going to be on the, the original school district site to, to partner with, for the outdoor swimming pool. So if this doesn't come out...
But they're, they're only going to put in two million?
They're going to put, they originally put in six. So maybe that's where the confusion is. They were never out. They were going to do six, and then they decided to build the, the recreation center that is, I can't, I don't know what the name of it is, but it's down the, the street.
By, by Harmon, yes.
By Harmon. So they funded that instead of putting all six into this, because there was some, you know, the folks down in that part of town really wanted the rec center down there. So it was a...
Peros swayed them.
What's that?
Peros swayed them.
Possibly. I don't know. But I, that's the, the reason that they changed their, their mind, if you will. But it's still, they're still, you know, would love to, to be a part.
Too many, because we just opened up this last spring, I'm sorry, our McDonald's Southeast YMCA down in southwest Fort Worth, excuse me, southeast Fort Worth. And so that number represents the amount of money they put into that project for the outdoor community pool that's there. And so they want to be able to expand their aquatics master plan without necessarily having to operate facilities. And so that's the partnership that we have with them there and in North Park. And so they're, they're not out, it's just whether or not. I mean, if we're going to be in Saginaw, that would be difficult for them to spend Fort Worth dollars in the city of Saginaw.
Sure. All right, Mary, you still have some questions?
And I had one other question. Will there be a diving pool?
No.
There won't be.
No.
Does the Eagle Mountain Saginaw Independent School District has a swim team, correct?
Yes, correct.
And do they also have, as that swim team, a diving team as a part of the swim team, or do you know?
I don't believe there's a diving team at all. I think it's just, it's just a swimming team.
Something that they did not want. So as we were negotiating with, with what the naterium would look like, we took Dr. Chidwell down to see our brand new, at the time, Hood County YMCA, which is the Granbury guys use as for their swim meets. And he liked that model, and that, you know, was simple and, and exactly what they needed.
Okay, thanks.
Cindy?
One comment that I do want to, and Patrick, you might be interested in this. Tarrant County College, as you know, has their senior education program. And their water aerobics for seniors is one of the first classes that fills up, it fills up on the first day. So they have a lot of seniors that use that facility. The problem is that parking over at Tarrant County College is becoming more and more of a challenge for seniors. It's, they have to park way out. So the walk, especially uphill in the south parking lot, is a challenge for them. I would love to see some senior parking, you know, close to the, the pool area, not necessarily handicapped, but senior parking, especially during times when the pool's open.
We talked about the possibility of maybe having a separate senior entrance as well to, to the facility.
Yeah. The idea that there would be, you know, somewhere between five and six thousand square feet of dedicated senior space that would have its own entrance. And one of the neat things about the senior memberships is, I, we have eight hundred what are called sober sneaker memberships. So those are eight hundred seniors who do not pay anything for their membership. They swipe a card in the Medicare supplement pen, folks give, you know, write us a check. So of our twelve or eleven hundred senior members, only three hundred of them are actually paying a monthly membership rate, if you will. But using the actual senior center would be free, but then they would have the ability to swipe their card and go in and use the rest of the sixty thousand square foot facility, should they have a membership, or should they have a membership through their, their health insurance.
And that's a huge benefit that I've seen for our seniors.
And, now, I do want to clarify that what I'm showing here in terms of a site is, is there are ten sites in Saginaw that are potentially viable sites. Only reason I'm showing it here on this diagram is so that you can see it in, in comparison to the other buildings, so that you'll see the size of the current recreation center and what the site, relative size of the new recreation center would be. It's double the size.
And one of the things that we do from a due diligence standpoint is, the Buxton Group has, does site scores for it, so that they've done a site score for it, and the issue where we're at. And as we discuss with you guys, what other options... And as we discuss with you guys what other options or locations there might be, we would have asked Buxton, excuse me, to do the same thing, to do site scores. Because the site scores will tell us from a variety of different reasons, the possibilities of success for that location.
All right, so I don't want to continue this on too much. I appreciate the information. What I would like to do is, Council, we had mentioned about timing. Based on what we've heard from the YMCA and the school, is there any concern with moving a bond election to November? What does anyone feel about that? Okay, I'm sorry. So pursuant to timing, based on what we've heard from the YMCA and from the school, is there any concern now with moving the bond election to November? Not, not May, but the bond election with November giving us time to pursue potentially the Y option as well with all the other? That's my question. That's what I really, I want to answer some of these big questions tonight, so. Everybody okay with November?
I'm okay.
Okay. I think we have guidance for that. I think what we need for the Y next, I would love to have Y work with staff to put some of these things down on paper, specifically what the relationship would be in some of these more details, a little more detail for Council to mull over. We've seen this a lot tonight. I think some of this is the first time folks have seen this. We will not make a decision on this tonight, but we can ask for more information. So Council, what I would request from you is, you've got questions on this, send those to Gabe in the next couple of days. What your big questions are, what information you would like to see from this, this project. And Gabe can work with Doug and the other Y folks to put some of this down for Council. We can work on it in a future workshop. Would that be acceptable there, everybody? Does that make sense? Is that a good direction to move forward? Any other questions for Mr. Fox? Thank you, sir. Thanks for your time. Thanks for staying late with us.
Doug, appreciate it.
All right, so the hour draws late. Is there anything else we want to discuss on bond issues tonight? I would propose that we stop our discussions here. We can continue in the second meeting in January. We are not under quite the time crunch. If we're going in November, we've got a little more time to maybe take this a little more measured pace. I'm sorry, I did get this request. I did have a person want to speak. Kelly Stewart? Ma'am, please come forward. I don't want to cut you off and I apologize. I just, so please.
I didn't know if I could.
Absolutely. Yes, yes ma'am.
I'm Kelly Stewart. I've lived in Saginaw for 25 years. I used to run the G D R A pool. If any of y'all are familiar with the nightmare of running a swimming pool is. 19-foot diving well, Olympic-sized pool. To have somebody else say they will do it is a no-brainer. It is a nightmare with the number of kids. And YMCA's know how to keep their facilities clean and all that. They're, you know, they're well-known for that. I've just been there, done that. If somebody had come in and said, I'll do it for you, I'd say, thank you very much. I just, if y'all want to know something about pools, I'll help you out. But, and I know the Saginaw School District does not have a dive team. So that's, they don't have a diving well to do it. But you're talking insurance nightmare, to be honest with you, with the school district. You really don't want to get into that. So that's my two cents.
Thank you very much for your expert opinion. We appreciate that.
You know, and the polar plunge will be a whole lot more pleasant inside.
That wouldn't be a polar. All right, so if everybody's okay, we'll cut off this discussion tonight. We will continue in the second meeting in January. So in the interim, I'd like the YMCA to work with staff, put some of this down on paper. I'd like Council to send your questions to Gabe, not just on the Y, on everything on this list. Specifically what information you have, what information we need, what the holes are, what we're lacking. To start making a work list or a punch list for Gabe to work through to help us better make decisions. So is that acceptable?
So Mayor, may I make a suggestion? I'd like for the school district to be included, to where it's all three entities having the conversation at the same time so that there's no gap in communication. So if that, if it would please the Council, I would like to see those meetings facilitated jointly between all three parties.
Okay, absolutely. I think Gabe can handle that, drive that. Excellent. All right, so then we're not taking any action here. So at 8:14, reconvene back into regular session. Then also at 8:14, we're going to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We will return, but only to adjourn. Thank you.
All right, so at eight fifty-nine, we're back from executive session. We do have a couple items we need to take care of that were just discussed and she's not back.
What do we do, just make a motion to?
Yeah, we've got to wait for-
Are we going to do them individually?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want Laura here. I did not see, she was not here, so. We will, we will address the three business improvement grants that were discussed and we will, can approve those since those were on the agenda, we can still-
The motion can simply be to approve each of them. It can be a joint motion unless we feel that the outcome may be different, but can, the motion can be made to approve the three building improvement grant applications as discussed in closed session.
I'll entertain the motion then.
I'll make the motion that we approve the three of the building improvement grants as we discussed in the six.
Charlie's second. All those who favor it, raise your right hand. All those opposed, there is none. Okay. Now I'll entertain the motion, do adjourn.
I'll make a motion, adjourn.
Valerie, Charlie-